To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all members are present this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes 7-0. Next up is the consent agenda, and these items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. On the consent agenda this evening is the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the approval of the school board minutes from the regular board meeting on July 13th, resignations, terminations, and non-renewals. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Ben, second. By Dan. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes 7-0. Onto the gifts. Just look at the gifts here for one second, sorry. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the acceptance of the gifts as listed?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that passes 7-0. Laker pride, oh, it is, oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Chad.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rich.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Aye. Laker pride, nothing tonight, and then the open forum is right now. That's a 15-minute period set aside to receive citizen input through this open forum segment on the board agenda. Is there anyone wanting to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none. Onto personnel. Matt.
Alright, good evening, members of the board. First off, I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment and him seeking board approval.
Alright, do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment? So moved. By Melissa, second.
Second.
By Dan. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes 7-0.
And next, I present the following leaves of absence and him seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the leaves of absence as listed?
So moved.
By Chad.
Second.
By Ben. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that's 7-0.
And next, I am presenting the district retirement of Eileen Hansen, who's been a kids' company site leader most recently, but has spent 18 years with us in our kids' company program. Certainly a huge presence within that program, and she will be missed.
Do I have a motion to approve the district retirement as listed?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
Second.
By Todd. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes 7-0 as well.
And lastly, this evening, I do have a staffing request for the upcoming school year. First off is a health aide position at Edgewood School. Previously, we've had a shared health aide between Westwood and Edgewood on the campus there. However, with the increase in programs at Edgewood, that's now become, there's become a need to have two health aides there. Between community ed dollars and also our third-party billing dollars, we will be able to cover the cost of this without an encumbrance to the general fund. And then, secondly, we have a request for an additional cross-country assistant coach at the middle school. We currently have one coach. This would be a second coach. It would give us a ratio of 20 to 1, and with students running outside on city streets, this is something where we really want to maintain those lower ratios to maintain safety. So with that, I make my request.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the staff requests as listed?
So moved.
By Todd, second.
Second.
By Melissa. Any questions? Alright, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes 7-0. And next up is old business, the innovation zone presentation.
Good evening, Chair Ruel, members of the board, Dr. Stallow, Heather Fitzloff, Assistant Principal at the high school, is here with me this evening to provide a presentation on the innovation zone and provide an update. I also would like to draw your attention to our audience. We do have two members from our partnership school, Lakeville area public schools. We have Dr. Lisa Schneider, who's in attendance with us tonight, and the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Barb Knudsen. They're here tonight as moral support and to show solidarity behind our blossoming partnership as we look forward and look ahead with the innovation zone. And so, tonight, Heather and I will be giving a presentation. There's three parts of our presentation. We'll be giving an overview. The last time as a board, we talked about this in earnest was back in March, early part of April. So it's been, sometimes we thought we'd go over, provide a little bit of an overview. Since that time, we've attended the Blue Valley Center for Advanced Professional Studies conference overview, and Heather will be sharing information about that conference. We did have three board members join us at that conference, and at that time certainly would hope or include the board voices at that conference as well. And then, from that conference, it was our time to really meet with Lakeville for the first time beyond just Dr. Schneider, Dr. Stallow, myself, and Ms. Knudsen, to really talk about what makes sense, what makes sense for our partnership, and we put forward some next steps and recommendations. At the end of the presentation, I am going to be seeking board approval on the job description for an innovation zone coordinator. I'll talk a little bit about that as we get into the presentation. And then also, in your board packet for our first read, is a draft joint powers agreement that, again, is tonight for our first read. We're not asking you to take any action on that, but in essence, we'll be coming back on August 24th for another review, and we'll be seeking board approval at that time moving forward. So the historical overview, really last year, last spring, the superintendents from Burnsville, Lakeville, and Prior Lake Savage got together to talk about where there are possible ways to partner, and specifically looking at the Department of Education Innovation Zone Pilot Project. And basically, through the MDE, it's an avenue for districts to collaborate together to improve student and school outcomes. There are two other districts in the state that are in an innovation zone, Farmington Public Schools with Spring Lake Park, and so we had a model to really look at and look at, you know, are there opportunities that we could look at, some mutual objectives to benefit students and schools. There's four areas that are listed up here, looking at through the innovation project of really what are the goals as districts come together, what are those types of programs to be looking for to create for students? And that's challenging programmatic options, professional development, student engagement, connection, challenging learning, and then really efficiencies in delivering financial and other services. When the superintendents started talking about this and reaching out to Jay Hogan and Jeff Ronenberg and the other districts, they really just kind of looked at what makes sense here, and where are there natural connections for us to be doing some similar things for kids? And when we looked at the four possible areas, and we started talking about some things that we'd have some mutual ideas and concepts to explore for our pilot, we really focused on three of the four. We knew that professional development would be coming as we went through this process, but really at the beginning, we're talking about challenging programs for kids, increasing their engagement, and then demonstrating those efficiencies in financial and other services. So from there, it became a what are we going to do? And we started the application process and started looking at what is it that we're looking for? And so we create a vision, a vision of what we want to attain, which is to create a highly marketable and innovative workforce in order to meet the demands of an increasingly competitive global market. And the mission underneath that vision is design, develop, and implement personalized learning experiences through programming and partnerships that include real-world profession-based work experiences. And that's where really kind of the rubber hits the road, is how can we better connect with businesses, community, nonprofit, and really look at having a deep experience for kids beyond the classroom, beyond the walls of our high schools? And then increase student readiness to meet the demands of the 21st century in careers, especially high-demand, high-wage jobs currently unmet in Minnesota. You know, the one thing, I'll birdwalk here just a little bit, when we look at the vision and mission, we're talking about highly marketable kids and workforce, we're not talking about just the high kids. We're talking about creating opportunities for all kids in our schools, and ultimately, kids coming up from elementary, middle school have opportunities for all kids at all levels to be able to somehow experience and engage in these types of experiences at the school as well as with real-world partnerships. And that's really an exciting component of this program as we move forward. So we're always looking for ways for students to find connection. This is another way that we can do that and move forward with. Rationale, we looked at the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. We also spent time looking at Dakota County Chamber of Commerce study about, you know, really what's available out there? What are those, where are those areas where we're projecting that we need more, where we need more of a workforce? And so, we knew a couple things. Minnesota's economy is going to continue to grow by 7% between 2012, 2022, and these are the particular careers that we're seeing some projected openings. So we know that there's possibilities out there, and looking at ways that we can create these pathways for students in our schools right now to help bridge the gap between high school and then post-secondary or going right into the job workforce. So our innovation zone partner, really why collaborate? And again, it comes back to, there's a lot of different reasons, but you know, these are kind of the top four. There are some efficiencies financially and with responsibility. There's a wide variety of district and school expertise between both districts and the three high schools, Lakeville North, Lakeville South, Prior Lake High School, and community business assets and expertise. And then also looking at ways that we can build on the curriculum development and seeing if there are any variances or working with our partner with businesses in order to have real-life work experiences so it meets the credits for kids to graduate. Looking at strategic planning, both districts have partnership embedded in the strategic plans, and beyond that, just strong traditions of having partnerships with community and business. And looking at between Lakeville and Prior Lake Savage, being able to open up the untapped potential between both districts and allowing students from both districts to have profession-based learning or connections in the businesses in both of those districts seems like such a gem. And to be able to connect our students to that, and then even beyond that to more of a global and twin-city metro area, there really is, there really are some great opportunities there. I want to go back just a minute because at the beginning, I talked about three districts, Lakeville, Prior Lake Savage, and Burnsville. And this past spring, when looking at the opportunity of going down the road of an innovation zone partnership, every district was, of the three, were talking about, does this make sense? You know, does this work for us? And for Lakeville Public Schools and Prior Lake Public Schools, we had those conversations and came to the conclusion that yes, there is merit here, and this is a great idea and something we're going to move forward with. Burnsville Public Schools also had that same conversation. They found merit with it also. They felt that there was good connection and good opportunities for their students, but at the point that they were going through a referendum for new buildings and also in defining their vision of 191, they just felt that the timing wasn't right for their district. And so, as we move forward, the door is open, you know, for future partnership and collaboration, but at this time, they've decided that they're going to focus more on their vision in Burnsville in District 191, and we're going to continue moving forward as partnership of two districts. For our partnership specifics, every high school has opportunities for students. We have our Fab Lab at the high school. At Lakeville, there's the online learning component, Link 12. Lakeville North has Business Academy, Lakeville South has a STEM Academy. And then the other partnership specific here is developing a Center for Advanced Professional Studies. And it's a concept of this, at this time, but the academy is something that would establish partnerships with business, medical, nonprofit, cities and counties, where students, where we could have really tailored internships and mentorships for students to participate in for a larger portion of the day more regularly. The students would really be in those partnerships for maybe up to a half the day for a semester, and then take classes back at their home high school, or if it makes sense, maybe take classes at the other high school based on where the partnership or where their mentorship may be. The benefits again is expanding, providing innovation and challenging programmatic learning opportunities, aligning the program opportunities to high-demand professions and careers, again, increasing student engagement, and then combine human capital, community assets, and district expertise to create profession-based learning. So in our application, we had to come up with a variety of success measures, and we came up with 12. And they're all listed here, and instead of reading off all 12, I'm just going to give you some highlights, but there's four key areas. One is on student achievement, student participation, stakeholder partnership feedback, and then post-secondary measures. And really, it's, we're at the very beginning part of this, we're in the development stage, but as we continue to move further down this track, these are measures we need to keep in mind, and as we grow the program, more measures are going to evolve and come to the forefront as we develop a CAPS program or pathways program to really benefit our kids. But at the start, this is what we talked about, you know, it's anything from high student achievement, closing the achievement gap, student registration, do we have students that are participating in these? Likewise, do we have businesses and nonprofit reciprocal and wanting students to engage in this? Looking certainly at stakeholder partnership feedback, is it a good experience for our kids? Likewise, is it a good experience for, you know, is there a benefit to the kids participating in these types of experiences? And then post-secondary, you know, really, how many are going to college, whether it be two-year, four-year, or going right into the workforce? But then maybe down the road, sending out another survey to say, you know, participation in a pathways program or CAPS, how did it impact your, you know, your studies either in post-secondary or in the positions that, you know, in the careers that you're seeking? No. So these are what we hope to deliver, what we are going to deliver from a goal standpoint, increase the number of students participating in project-based learning for 2016, 17 school year, increase graduation rate of targeted subgroups by at least 5%, and increase the number of students, of targeted students in profession-based learning to narrow the achievement gap by at least 50% of 2017. These are the measurable goals we needed to have in the innovation zone in order to comply with the requirements for this application. The focus is, and you've heard it, it should be a recurring theme here, college and career readiness, profession-based learning, those partnerships, and then create the Center for Advanced Professional Studies. We are in year one, and it is all about planning. This is a planning year back in March when we were talking about, you know, what 2015, 2016 would look like. It's all about planning, and we're still planning. There's a lot of things that go into this, but as we started to get into the school year, I guess, and we started to talk about what next year looks like, there's some action that's coming. It's almost like super urgent, really urgent, and urgent. And we'll talk a little bit about that here in the next steps because as we want to market the kids and we're looking at getting ready for that 2016, 2017 school year, we really need to look at classes and pathways, have those in essence somewhat solidified by student registration, which is this December. And so as we kind of backwards design, there's some things that we've identified that we're going to be working on, but also too, we've got a plan which we'll be sharing with you shortly. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Heather to talk about the Blue Valley CAPS Conference.
I'm really excited to share with you about our trip to Kansas City. The Blue Valley CAPS Conference, they call it the Summer Huddle, and folks from all over the country came, board members, business partners, community members, other assistant principals, principals at various levels of their implementation of CAPS. We brought with us from Prior Lake Savage, myself and Mr. Holmberg, Dr. Stallow, as well as Joe Kabuszek and Kevin Schuttinger from the high school, as well as our board members, Melissa Anger, Stacy Ruel, and Chad Rittenhour. So we, during those three days, it was inspiration moving into our first steps here of planning. We were able to ask specific questions, talk, and hear from students, which was probably the most powerful aspect of the trip. However, we also had Lakeville that was there with us, Dr. Snyder, as well as a representative from Lakeville North and Lakeville South, and again, as we move, and they had a board member as well. As we move forward into this planning year, we were able to hear how CAPS developed and see what the potential is for the future. CAPS, the CAPS Conference talked about five guiding principles, and it's going to sound similar to what Mr. Holmberg just talked about. First, the instructors develop project-based experiences for students based on their collaboration with the community partners and businesses, local businesses, that offers the students and the businesses and community partners a benefit, and we heard directly from them about those benefits. The second guiding principle talks about the experiences that really build the professional skills for students, and we saw them firsthand. So not only do we, did we hear from students as they spoke to a large crowd of adults, that communication piece, it was absolutely powerful, and as well as their specific experiences. One student in particular that I talked to actually after he presented, actually tried to sell us his product that he had come up with in collaboration with his partner, and he not only learned those essential skills of sales, but just his presence with us and how he came around to saying so, asking us the right questions, down to they were dressed professionally and just were top-notch. And all of that, if you asked those students, was a testament to the CAPS program. So truly, they've implemented a model that matches with these guiding principles. The third guiding principle was where students find their strengths and passions through their career pathways, through their interest levels. There might be an interest, but they might find their passion. And as Mr. Holmberg said before, our goal in all of education, we want kids to find their passion and that purpose for when they leave our school. And we still have a group of kids that need to still find that passion and purpose, and this hands-on, project-based partnership is just powerful to them as they move on as a resource. Many of them actually talked about internships that they were able to secure as they left high school, moving into their post-secondary education. Others went right into the workforce and actually talked about being in class with other students and their professors and the students in their classroom being impressed with their experiences and couldn't believe that they had them in high school. The fourth basically focuses on those 21st century learning. That fourth guiding principle is where instructors will create that environment where critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and just working through a problem and that process to come to an end result. And I also found it interesting in talking to one of the teachers who had been there at the implementation of the CAPS program, she was very critical when students would come to her initially with their project, with their problem, the problem, they'd have the problem and then come to her, and she'd see where there might be holes or where it might be not a real strong project, but the process in itself, the critical thinking, sitting down and talking with the partners, and going through that process was what it was all about. Because in the real world, that's what they do. It doesn't always work out. So that experience in itself is also one of the guiding principles. And finally, it's not a set in stone from year-to-year curriculum. It's a continuous partnership with the community and businesses where we know that we are continually to try, continually trying to find a program and train kids and teach kids about jobs that don't even exist yet. So each year, part of the guiding principle is coming back to the table and saying, what new technology have you experienced in your company where we can provide students that might have that experience or that tech, those technical skills, or so on and so forth? So all of that is part of their guiding principles from year to year and continuing to implement the best career pathway for each of the students involved. Finally, during the three days of action-packed time that we were there, there were also many sessions where depending on who you are, what sort of interest you were, what role you had in this process, as you can see, there are many different, just nuts and bolts, how did you develop curriculum? How did you develop those partnerships? What's the role of the Board of Education in all of this? Particularly to me and to the assistant principals who work with kids every day, aside from just visualizing the students in a program like this and being just overwhelmed, thinking this is awesome for our kids, picturing individual students in that, it was the high school relationships and partnerships. Part of what we also talked about was, even though we're working with Lakeville North and South, we want students to still feel a sense of pride for their home high school. We want them to still feel like Lakers. And so part of that was asked, and many of the students, that's why it's for part of the day or maybe a class, as well as can they still participate in activities and how are the instructors and working that out? And we found that the kids all said, oh yeah, if I had a basketball practice or speech practice or the musical practice, they were very flexible in that. So being mindful of that was something that was important to me too as a representing high school kids and working with them and what's important to them. I think one of the analogies was, you know, after school, this is another positive, after school, they go and they play at Lakeville North in volleyball on Thursday night, and the next day, they might be working collaboratively with their teammate or, I'm sorry, their opponent as they come back to the table the next day. And that in itself is another life skill that's just valuable about all of this. So lots of conversations firsthand from folks that had implemented one year, were in planning phases, or two and three and four and five years already in it. So all of those were very inspiring, I think, for everyone that was in attendance, and it really helped us to move into our discussions, kind of bring us back to, well, this beautiful building and all these options that Blue Valley CAPS had, to oh gosh, how do we just get started? So we were able to take that opportunity and sit down with Lakeville and come up with next steps as we move towards implementation, hopefully a year from now. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Holmberg for those plans.
Yes, as Heather mentioned, it was a great opportunity for our group to meet with Lakeville and really talk about, you know, kind of taking the application, looking at what we're seeing at CAPS. We also, you know, what we're not, what we haven't said tonight is, we've also went up and saw Minnetonka's Vantage Program, which is a similar program to the Blue Valley CAPS. So we have some local connections to see how it's done there too. And you also, we just started to talk about how do we take an application with a vision and mission? We've got real-life examples between Blue Valley and Minnetonka Vantage, and then between two school districts, bring it together so that we have something that meets our students' needs. And so, we really started having that conversation about what makes sense, what's the next steps, and tonight is one of those steps, is really that communication with our school boards about what we plan to do. And so really, first step here is development of implementation plans. And one of the things we see here, and we've worked on in Prior Lake Savage, is that 30-day, 60-day, 90-day, you know, what needs to happen in the next 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, so that we start to identify those things that, again, might be really urgent or somewhat urgent or just urgent as we start looking and getting into the school year. And there's really four areas. It's curriculum, communication administratively and at school board level, and then also community business partnerships. And so on the curriculum side of things, we have that job recommendation for you this evening, which I'll talk to you about in just a little bit. We need to start talking about curriculum development, looking at opportunities, areas of interest. We've talked about sending out a student survey to gauge students' interest in what type of career pathways or potential job profession-based to gauge their interest as we identify these areas. Again, registration guide is coming up in December, and so we need the backwards design from that. And any curriculum that we're working on has to be inclusive of Prior Lake High School, Lakeville North, Lakeville South, high school teachers. So it is a true So it is a true collaborative effort in that we have professionals and staff from all three of those schools working in concert for student outcomes. We've talked about the role of a consultant, and again, there are consultants out there, and, and we've talked about reaching out to see at the beginning parts, what expertise and what level of connection they can offer to help us get off the ground to a point where it's sustainable. Meetings with post-secondary, we have great relationships with Normandale and Inver Hills. You might hear later tonight that a lot of our students in the enrollment side with post-secondary enrollment attend Normandale. And so, we do have good connections there. We also have connections with the University of Minnesota, University of Minnesota-Mankato. And then coming back to that innovation application, you know, either revise the plan so it's reflective of Prior Lake High School and Lakeville North and South. And then there's also that joint powers agreement, which is a draft that you have this evening. On the communication side of things, again, it come, we, we're still at the concept of the Center for Advanced Professional Studies. And so we need to recognize that, spend some time talking about a name, a formalized name, branding, marketing, and joint communications between Lakeville and Prior Lake. And then we need to start, once we're clear with that, we need to start reaching out and having meetings with the community for the Chamber of Commerce, Rotary meetings. We had our, our high school administrative retreat last week that we've shared this information with our administrators. And then upcoming a fall workshop, talking with our teachers, not just our high school teachers, but our entire district-wide teachers about what this is and how everybody has a, can have a connection to this. Advisory board, we, we understand the value of that, but looking at seeking community members from both communities, or actually all three communities, Lakeville, Savage, and Prior Lake, to serve on that and identify what that membership would be. Administratively and from a school board, we've had a variety of meetings, quite a few meetings, the superintendents, assistant superintendents, curriculum, high school administration. Much like tonight, you're receiving the information, a board meeting tomorrow night is Lakeville Area Public Schools Board Meeting. Dr. Stallow will be in attendance there tomorrow night as this information is presented to, to the Lakeville School Board. We've talked in the future of having some joint school board work sessions and executive team meetings with the superintendents as we start moving forward. And then having that staffing for that TOSA, the job description, and then examining the role of a student advisory committee so that as we talk about student leadership, we can engage students in this process as well. And then the next steps, community business partnerships, again, I've referenced it, putting together an advisory council, having community groups presentation. Again, if we're looking at tying into connections to the community, we want to get the word out of what we're seeking and what we're planning to do. You know, investigate a satellite campus, add into our classroom. Several of the programs that have that Center for Advanced Study, not everything is like Blue Valley CAPS, where they have their own high school building. That, that's really a, a different type of experience, you know, given that, that's the experience that they've created in Blue Valley. Quite, there are, the model that's more familiar around here is working with our business partners to have satellite classrooms at those businesses. So our students would go to those businesses, nonprofit areas or, or medical areas to have classes there with teachers, and then from there have the, have the learning experiences on-site and working with projects that are hands-on for those, for that experience. And then identify those community and business partners, invite them in, have an introduction, present the vision of the program, the specifics, and see if we can engage more partners in this project. So, before we get to the discussion, and I guess I would again invite our board members who went to Blue Valley, just, maybe just to share a few words if they feel comfortable. We have a job description for the Innovation Zone Coordinator. I've worked with the Lakeville contingency as well as Executive Director Mons with the, with the job description that's in your board packet. One thing just to note, once we settle on a name for our Center for Advanced Program Studies person, the name may change in the future, but the responsibilities that are in the job description will stay largely the same. So I am seeking approval on that job description this evening, understanding that the actual title may change down the road. And then just to draw your attention to that draft, joint powers agreement, you know, again, that's going before Lakeville tomorrow night, but again, to give you an opportunity to look at that draft, joint powers agreement, if you have any questions, otherwise we would bring that back for board approval on August 24th, so.
Okay. Melissa, Chad, do you guys want to give your thoughts? Anybody?
Sure. We've had a lot of meetings on this through now. We've had a lot of preparation, and I think this is one of the most exciting opportunities for our young people to match their passions, their, their strengths, their excitement as they're preparing their years through high school and on to career-ready and jobs and, and college and matching students and mentors and business partners. As a, as a business person myself, I'm excited. I'm excited that our kids are going to be able to do this, and I think it's a smart decision for us to work collaboratively with Lakeville. And, yeah, I, I'm excited about the project. I think it's a smart opportunity for our kids. It delivers on what we give to all students, and I promise to, to offer things to all students.
It was amazing how engaged every student there who spoke to us was. Separate the building from the program, it's, the program is amazing. I know we can do it here, just start off small, smaller. It's, it, it kind of brings learning home to all the students. They get to see actually what they'll be able to do with what they learn, rather than you'll use it in college or you'll use it in the next grade. They, they can apply focus and see what they're going to do. I think it's, I think it's going to be a very good thing. A little bit of concern that a few people have mentioned this too, have had is that it would be like a CAPS system, which is completely something it is not. It's not where we'll give a test to students and say, well, you're going to be, you're going to be an engineer and you're going to be a doctor and you're going to do this. No, it's the students show the interest and we assist them in following their passion. That's, that's a very important thing.
And I would just echo that. I, I think it was really exciting to be able to give these opportunities to our kids. I think, you know, given the size of both of our districts, you know, collectively, I think we're probably talking, I know, Lisa, you might have to, but, you know, four, 5,000 students are possibly going to be able to get to this, you know, as an opportunity. So, you know, I think being able to work together, I think we saw models there too where, you know, there was one district, two districts, I heard of one that had seven districts working together. So it's, it's been done before, and collectively pooling our resources, I think makes a lot of sense. From a community standpoint, it opens up a lot more opportunities for us. And I think being able to, I think, and I heard this there too, is, you know, it's really important to find your passion, and I think my daughter just went through the mentoring program and is now going into college, but, and she did something, but she found out she didn't like it. And there is value in that as well, because I think when the world is like this big to kids, it seems overwhelming, and if they can have something that's real, and to have that experience where they can picture themselves even doing just a little piece of, of, of some type of work and make that, you know, relationship, you know, there's a lot of, lot of value there in, in giving them direction. So, I'm really excited about it. I think this is the beginning of a, a great partnership. You know, and I think, if I'm wrong, I might be wrong, but I thought Blue Valley started out small as well. They didn't obviously have the big building with 600 students. So, you know, I think you start small and, and it grows. And, you know, we'll have the curriculum and the expertise behind it to just kind of make it grow. So, I'm really excited about it. And I know unfortunately, not all of you guys got to go with us, but, so we came back all really pumped. So, and I guess I would open it up to you guys if you guys have questions of us or, or Jeff or Heather or anybody, just to kind of let out and have some discussion about.
And Blue Valley definitely did start with having all the classes at, at their
Right.
Other sites.
Yeah, through their partners.
Through their partners, yes.
Yep.
Through their business partners.
Yep, go ahead.
I had one. So, looking forward, are we talking about one area of interest? What is, what's the typical place to start? Because it seems to me you'd want to get one thing right, and then from there you could add, once you had a blueprint, you could add as much as you wanted going forward, but it seems to me you'd want to start with.
Were you at Blue Cap, Valley CAPS with?
I'm sorry. No, I did talk to Chad a little bit, so I, I did hear that was a recommendation. So what's, what's?
That is exactly, you know, we're, we're talking about how can we build on the engineering and the FabLab? How, you know, maybe it's, it's an opportunity to expand FabLab where we can go out to local businesses that we have connections in with engineering and to see if there'd be willing partners there. I know Lakeville has connections with the medical and healthcare industry, and so they're looking at those types of connections. But certainly, starting with the programs that we've had success, that we have built, and then expanding from there. We've talked in the future, you know, environmental education is deep in, in Prior Lake Savage. We have hosted partnerships with Three Rivers District, DNR, Fish and Wildlife, you know, down the road, maybe looking at an environmental science or environmental engineering pathway down the road. But, you know, again, to your point, it's starting small, it's starting with something that we have a, we have expertise and we have strong connections to, and then it's a program that, that we can build and, and build off the growth. And once we have that success, start to build other types of pathways and programs as well.
Okay, thanks. Other question? Yep, go ahead, Mitch.
How is this different than the mentor program?
That's a great question. The mentor program, I, I guess the, maybe the easiest way to look at that, with the mentor program might be once a week, or it might be short periods of time where they're meeting with a, a business, or they're, they're meeting with, you know, somebody that's in the community. What's different about this is students are actually given real projects from the business or from the organization to work on collaboratively, either as a group of students or with people that are working within that industry. So if I'm a student that's in a CAPS program, it would, you know, either in a semester or year-long format, for half the day, I might be spending half the day at this, at this company, working on this project.
With the team.
With the team.
The team.
And then the other half the day, back at the high school, working on classes towards graduation. The key is, as I'm working as a team on these projects with these, with these either nonprofits or business or community partners, that the projects meet criteria for graduation and graduation requirements. And so, that's where that educational planning comes in, that as we look at engineering, are there math credits? Are there, you know, communications credits or things like that that we can embed within the project so that as students are taking, doing that real-life problem-solving and that, those plans, they are actually having demonstrable evidence they can, they can apply towards high school graduation.
And then one more, if I could? You talked about subgroups in some of your goals. What subgroups? Is it targeted specifically for subgroups?
Yeah.
Or is it, is this a program for subgroups only?
No.
Okay, so talk about that subgroup goal, if you would.
The subgroup goal is, is relative to the achievement gap. I mean, from this Department of Education, obviously we're focused on the, on student achievement for all students, but we're talking about equity of programs for students as well, that this is a program that would be open to all students and that academically, as we look at our, at our ethnicity within the district, as well as, you know, kids within the programs, that there are learning targets, that they are meeting their criteria for graduation, and that we are closing that, closing that achievement gap.
Thank you.
Melissa?
I was going to add back to Rich's question, these students are doing project presentations to C-suite level at the companies, which is a really wonderful opportunity that, that they could never get otherwise.
Sweet?
Your CEO, CFO.
Oh, okay. Exec you speak. I, I didn't know what that term was.
I'm sorry, I apologize. So they're at that level, and they're doing, they're doing these projects because the, that, that management team says they have a need, and then they'll put the project together, and then they'll make the presentation, and then they oftentimes have a capstone at the end of the project at the end.
Any other questions? Anyone have any questions on the agreement of any sort? Did you guys have a chance to look at that? I know Lakeville's had a chance to look at, at that, and, you know, that's why it's just coming for a first read. I think if you guys have any feedback or anything on that, you know, just let Dr. Stallow, myself, know and get it figured out before next time. Okay. Any other questions? I think we're going to look for approval of the job description, right? And I got to get the name right. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the Innovation Zone Coordinator position as listed?
So moved.
By Melissa.
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead. That means it. Hmm? No? Okay. Next up on old business is just kind of a calendar change. We just noticed the calendar coming up, and I think we did this last year actually. We shifted wanting, we're wanting to shift anyway, the November 9th meeting to November 2nd, and the November 23rd meeting to November 16th, the study session that week, just to kind of get it out on Thanksgiving week. So, anybody have any questions on that? Pretty straightforward. Okay. Do I have a motion to amend the calendar as listed?
So moved.
By Todd. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. New business, up the dissolution of the cooperative sponsorship. Oh, you are not, I was just saying you are not Mr. Reitz.
I was the same.
Yep.
Very simply, Mr. Reitz is looking to dissolve the cooperative sponsorship with girls hockey for Bell Plain. They had no participants last year, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a cooperative sponsorship for a school if they're not going to have any participants. So it's a pretty simple. And, and obviously we'll continue to offer girls hockey, but it'll be just our district like we do with any other of our extracurricular activities.
All right. Do I have a motion for the dissolution of the cooperative with Bell Plain for girls hockey?
So moved.
Rich? Todd? Rich? Okay. All right.
That can happen.
All right. Got it Martha? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, on behalf of Mr. Reitz.
Mm-hmm. This was supposed to be Matt Mons, but, oh no, here, Julie, sorry. I see it. Student enrollment.
Good evening, Board Chair, Ruel, Board members, Dr. Stallow. We always talk about our enrollment at this time of the year, and as I work through the enrollment, we've talked with the elementary principals and making sure that our enrollment is, that we try and keep those class sizes low. And we are about 85 students above my budgeted number right now, mainly at the middle and upper level. We're still short at our elementary level, what we have for budget, and so we are still holding one FTE teaching staff for the elementary to see if we get those additional students. So we are looking very well for our start of the school year, for our enrollment. We do have, typically, we lose about 50 kids from the beginning of the school year until October 1. And why do we lose those students is because we don't know what, which students are leaving our district, especially at that upper level. Our elementary students' parents are really good about letting us know that they're moving or whatever they're doing, that their changes that they're making in their lives, they let us know because it's important for the kids. But as those kids get older, it doesn't become quite as important to let us know. And so, we definitely see who's not coming to school on the first couple of days of school. However, that still leaves us fairly well off for the start of school, right on target. The interesting piece about today is I got my enrollment numbers this morning at 10 o'clock, and since 10 o'clock this morning, we have had 17 students enroll in our school.
Since 10?
Since 10 o'clock this morning. So it's definitely October, or August, yeah. Not October yet, August. We definitely have parents now seeing some urgency of getting their students enrolled. If that If that trend continues, of those seventeen students, eleven of them were elementary. So we very well may be releasing that additional FTE to our elementary staff here in the next day or two, if we continue to see that growth coming at the elementary level. Exciting things happening here in Prior Lake Savage School District. That's just an update about our enrollment. Any questions concerning that?
When will, you're gonna come back with us in two weeks? Let us know anymore, or?
Well, absolutely. I will keep you updated.
Okay.
If we have needs.
So many we've grown since then.
Yes, I'm sure we will. If we have needs over and above what the board's allocated, we're still holding a couple pieces. And if we see that need happening, we will definitely let you know if there's something in addition that we need.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. You're up again, right? PSCO.
I wanna talk to you about an opportunity that we have with Normandale Community College. We have something called an income contract that they are looking at, that we've investigated, some work on this. In the past, we, last year, we'll just talk a little bit about last year. We had eighty-seven students attend on Normandale Community College. Twelve of those were full-time students, and about seventy-five part-time students attending Normandale Community College. When that happens, we claim those part-time, the full-time students, we get twelve percent of our basic formula is what we see in revenue for those students attending college full-time at PSCO. For those students that are part-time, however, we claim the amount of time that they're in our high school, and Normandale gets some revenue as well from the state of Minnesota for the time that they're spending at the college. Now, because those two components don't seem to quite mesh to be a full-time FTE for our students in terms of money, what happens is, we get a little bit of money, and Normandale gets a little bit of money, and the state keeps a little bit of money, is what has happened in the past. And what we're looking at now is that we would claim our students as full-time students in our district. And Normandale would charge us two hundred and twenty-five dollars per credit, per semester credit for, to the district, and we would pay that fee to them. And what happens is, we would keep then all the dollars that the state is currently keeping. The students for the two twenty-five, they would get their books and their semester credit for the year. And we would pay that on behalf of the student. So it's a little bit of a win. Actually, Normandale would get a little bit more money than they've been getting from the state, and we would see more money as well. So it's kind of a win-win situation for both Normandale Community College and, and Prior Lake Savage School District. And so what I'm looking for is some approval from, on the board to move ahead with this. In terms of what would we see if we were looking at last year's numbers, it's about a hundred thousand dollars for our district. It's a significant number. So I see this as a definite win for the school district.
That's even after the payments are made to Normandale?
After the payments are made.
Great.
But we'll see a little bit different look in our enrollment now because those kids will stay here. We won't see that big reduction of sixty students in our enrollment numbers. But then what will happen is, we will see an increase in revenue, but we'll also see an increase in expenditure. So if the board approves this, when I'm creating the final budget in December, I will take all those into consideration, and you'll see that adjustment in our budget.
No real downside here?
There's no real downside.
Okay.
It's a nice option for us, and it's, it's a little bit, it's happened in the past in different districts, but it is a little bit different now that they, when they changed the weighting and the dollar amounts. So it really does make a bigger difference now than it has in the past.
Rich?
So Normandale does this with all these students from all the districts, then? Has this contract with other school districts?
They do have this type of contract with a few other school districts in the state.
Seeing other community colleges do the same thing, like?
We are looking into it with other community colleges as well. This is our biggest one, however. This is definitely our biggest. And it's more of a community college type of thing than it would be like our state universities.
Yeah. Because I would think the credit's at the U of M.
Well, and I think it's a billing issue, it's a credit issue, books. It's, it's a little bit more involved than on their part for Normandale to do the administration of it.
Basically, this is a technical maneuver to capture around, capture more revenue around to get away from current statutes.
Get away from, I'm sorry.
The current statutes in Minnesota.
Um.
That, so they can keep them.
It's a way to capture those dollars and keep them in our district. Correct.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the PSO agreement with Normandale Community College as presented?
So moved.
By Chad. Second by Dan. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero. All right. Thank you. And the budget calendar?
Give me one more time.
Yeah. Here you are.
The budget calendar is very similar to what we've done in the past. As you know, this is year, in the second year of the biennium. So we're usually able to see our budget process go a little bit quicker than it has in the past. But it's still out there the same as it is this year with going through all of the processes that we have, approving the audit. We're looking to really do that in October of this year, to move that process ahead. So it gives us a little bit more time to prepare for that final budget in, in December. And we usually approve the audit in November, so we're really trying to push that to October this year. That's the biggest change. Otherwise, it's still developing that budget, starting in January for the sixteen-seventeen school year, and moving ahead with that process, with a preliminary budget approval in June. And if we can do it earlier, like we have in the past, in that second year of the biennium, we would certainly look at doing that as well. You're usually tired of hearing from me that many times.
All right. Okay, we have to approve this. All right. Any questions for Julie on the calendar? Okay. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the 2015-16 budget calendar as listed?
So moved.
By Todd. Second?
Second.
By Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is policy, which I don't believe we have anything this month, and then administrative reports. Uh, Dr. Stallow?
Excellent. Thank you. In Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our district mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. Our collective work is focused on achieving our mission, and I'd like to report on some of the work in which we have been engaged. First of all, Mr. Holmberg and Ms. Feslaw, thank you so much for the presentation. It was great to have Dr. Snyder and Ms. Knutson here as well, representing our partnership, board members who attended, and other administrators who attended. It was a lot of your time to learn so that great things could happen for our students. So thank you very much. We have a long history of a very strong working relationship with our cities, and we continued to foster that this evening with a joint meeting between the Savage City Council and our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools School Board. Our purpose in coming together is to ensure that we are all well-informed in order to collaborate and best serve our students, families, and community members. I want to thank Mayor Williams and City Administrator Barry Stock and the council, as well as other staff members for being here this evening, and look forward to continuing to forge a positive and productive working relationship. Also wanted to share some information on our MCA results. The State of Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment, or MCA results, were recently released, and we have much to celebrate as we begin to desegregate the data and analyze the results. As a reminder, the MCA tests are the state tests that help districts measure student progress toward Minnesota's academic standards in reading, math, and science. In reading, Prior Lake Savage Area students, school students are outperforming state peers by more than ten point six percent at all grade levels. We've seen nice gains, particularly in grade four, fifth, and seventh. In math, our students are outperforming state peers by more than fifteen percent at all grade levels, with eleventh-grade students increasing proficiency as a cohort by nearly four percent. Fifth graders as a cohort did decrease in proficiency by about ten percent. In science, students are outperforming state peers by more than ten point three percent at all grade levels. Eighth-grade students increased in proficiency by four percent over the previous years. Fifth-grade students did decrease in proficiency by twelve percent since 2014. While there were some online testing disruptions for students as they tested in math, reading, and science, we will be looking at ourselves and spending time with our curriculum committees to identify specific areas where students performed well, and those areas in which we want to and need to improve. We'll look at aligning curriculum and our instructional strategies based on student needs. With the support of Q Comp and learning teams at each school, teams will review current student data to identify student achievement goals for this year and plan instruction to engage students and to meet those goals. District administrators will utilize our data warehouse to review and analyze historical data trends to determine our student growth and gap-closing measures for all subgroups. We will use this data in part to review our district goals as outlined in our World's Best Workforce Plan, and to ensure that we are meeting the Minnesota Department of Education goals. Jeff alluded to these earlier in the Innovation Zone Plan. The goals of reducing achievement gaps by fifty percent in all areas by 2017, as well as increasing the graduation rate to ninety percent for every student subgroup by 2020, with no group below eighty-five percent. Obviously, you will be hearing a lot more information about our data. We'll have a formal presentation regarding these results, which will be given to the board in September. I just want to take the opportunity to thank our teachers and staff for the great work that they did throughout last year to get such great results, and thank them in advance for the work that they'll be doing, desegregating the data and analyzing it as we look for those areas that we want to improve. I also wanted to just report briefly on the administrative retreat that we had last week. The entire administrative team dedicated two full days last week to learning, reflecting, and planning as we officially kicked off the 2015-16 school year. We used our strategic roadmap and the tenets of the book Switch by Chip and Dan Heath to bring life to our theme of honoring the past and creating the future. We have much exciting work in front of us, and we are, we grounded ourselves in our collective role along with our board members as the guiding coalition of the strategic roadmap, our framework for the future. The full administrative team will be coming back together August 25th to continue our work, and we'll discuss the communication, communicating our message to staff during the back-to-school kickoff at the building and at each site during the school year. Finally, our iPad distribution dates for grades eight through twelve have been set and communicated to families. This will take place at Prior Lake High School, beginning August 17th, and will be wrapping up August 20th. We are also on schedule to distribute one thousand new Chromebooks for middle and high school students. Existing Chromebooks are being redeployed at the elementary level. Our desktop computer refresh is complete in all of the school buildings. The new computers are just starting to be installed at the DSC. The original computers, which are just three years old, will be redeployed as student computers in labs throughout the district. So, as you can tell, the pace is definitely picking up as we prepare for students to begin the new school year in less than a month. We are delighted by the number of people who are coming into the district service center enrolling their children and wanting to learn more about our schools. Seventeen as of ten o'clock this morning. And we just want to invite parents to continue to call or visit to make sure that all of your answer, your questions are answered. Thank you.
All right. Administrative reports. Mr. Holmberg?
Yes. I just wanted to give a brief update. We are getting ready for our next demographic study committee process on August 24th. I will be bringing forward the process, membership, and meeting schedule for that group to commence later in September and wrapping up their, their review of our demographics and enrollment to bring back to the board in October. So just as a brief refresher, as per our demographic study that we had completed several years ago, one of the recommendations was to annually convene a group to look at our demographics locally, building permits, looking at student enrollment. And so just following through with that charge, and as we continue to get seventeen more students as of ten o'clock today, and growth is, is coming in our communities, it's, it's more vital and more important than ever that we have this group come together to look at this information and, and make some recommendations and key insights for you as board members moving forward.
All right. Julie?
Last year, at the end of the legislative session, they authorized school districts to be able to create this ten-year long-term facility maintenance report. This has been a really, as we reviewed this, and I brought it to the last board meeting in July, that this was something new for us. This is really going to help our district. Jim Delbo and myself, along with our partners Nexus for our deferred maintenance and IEA for our health and safety, have been working with us to create this long, ten-year plan. We actually have to submit that to the Department of Education by Friday this week. So we've been working really hard on putting that information together, and what, what kinds of deferred maintenance items do we have? Those Group B projects are one, you know, it was the area that we're really looking for to fill in those holes each of those years. And when can we do some of those projects over the next several years? If Jim were to be able to talk right now, he would tell you that it's definitely not enough money in the, in this long-term facility maintenance to do all of our Group B projects, which we understand. But it is a vehicle of which we can definitely use to help us offset some of those costs. Nice part is that it's an aid component that's really helping us with this, that aid that we're getting from the department or from the state, and we're not having to go to our taxpayers for these deferred maintenance items. And just so you know, this long-term facility maintenance report covers health and safety. It covers deferred maintenance, and it also is helping to cover our alt facilities bonding that we just completed with our past projects. And so it involves all three of those components. So we're able to do for sixteen, sixteen-seventeen school year, because that's what we're loving for here in September, we're able to add about eight hundred thousand dollars in projects without an increase to our taxpayers. So it is really a big help. And then it goes up from there each of the next couple years. In the past, all of those components had separate funding options, and, and there wasn't any aid component to that. So it is really a help for our district. We will, because it's the first year of this long-term facility maintenance report, we will come to the board in August at the next board meeting to ask for approval. It's the one time that we submit something to the Department of Ed by a required date where they say that we can come to the board for approval after the fact. And so that's what we'll be doing. The board certainly has a chance, and we will have an opportunity again to go through this and make changes if the board wishes us to make any kinds of types of changes. And it's really for the sixteen-seventeen, even though we're doing it now quickly. It's for sixteen-seventeen that we're most concerned, and then we'll be looking at it in conjunction with any other kind of projects we'll be doing in the future to make adjustments to that as necessary. So it's not an inflexible document.
Is this something that we'll have to, every year?
We will, every year probably be approving this. And most likely, it wouldn't be something that's just a one-year.
Okay.
But I just wanted to update you on that, since we talked about it in July, what that looks like. So we have been working on that report.
Okay. Board reports? Any board reports? Student council starts next month. She'll be here next month. All right. Seeing nothing else, the only future event we have coming up is our regular board meeting, our second one of this month, which will be August 24th, right here at the DSC at 7:00 PM. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Todd? Second by Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
We're adjourned. Thank you.